Ten, nine, eight, yeah, seven. Six, seven, eight. Right.
Here we go.
Okay, folks, we're going to get started here. We have our light on and that says it's time to go. And, but, good evening, everyone, and welcome this evening. And I'll call the meeting to order. Would you like to join us for the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Allison, could we get a roll call, please?
Allison?
Here.
Sykes?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Kellum?
Here.
Kupczynski?
Here.
Coburn?
Here.
Canopa?
Here. Okay. And first on our agenda, then, is for business, is a proclamation this evening. And this is for the LGBT Pride Month for June 2018. Whereas, the month of June is globally recognized as LGBT Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall riots that occurred in June 1969. And whereas, LGBT Pride Month was established in a worldwide effort to provide a positive stance against violence and discrimination towards lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people. And whereas, there are members of the LGBT community in Albany, and we recognize them as members of our community deserving of equal treatment. Now, therefore, I, Sharon Canopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2018 to be LGBT Pride Month in Albany, and I invite all residents to observe this month, which recognizes the global goal of ending discrimination and violence against our LGBT community members. And witness whereof, I hereon to accept my hand and cause seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 13th day of June 2018. And I do believe, I think, it's planned to have the Pride Parade this year, but I don't remember what the date was.
June 24.
June 24, yes.
June 24. Okay, so not this weekend, the next weekend. Okay, yeah, and it's going to be Saturday at what time?
February 24.
Okay, all right, so just down front here on Broad Albany at 10:00 a.m. on the 24th. So, okay, all right, thank you. Okay. And next, scheduled business is the Human Relations Commission 2017 Annual Report. So Stephanie and Chris, can you give us a report this evening?
Okay. Okay, and it's on this time. Fabulous. Good evening. So, attached to, well, you guys received our report. So, the Human Relations Commission was established by Albany City Council back in 2007 with the goal to strengthen connections within Albany's diverse community by being committed to the philosophy of inclusion, equal opportunity, fair treatment for all residents of Albany, and promoting harmonious relations among the citizens of Albany. Together, we recommend programs, activities, ordinances, expenditures, and other appropriate governmental activities, which will serve the goal of maintaining respectful interactions within our community. And we just, we submit these over to Peter, our city manager, and to the entire city council. So, in formulating any, all of our recommendations, we strive for actions that lead to positive and respectful relations committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion within the community. So, we feel that we have found success this past year. We've reaffirmed our objectives within the Human Relations Commission by being open and available to our community and providing an avenue for discourse. We are active participants and have attended, you know, a million activities, I believe, at minimum of one each month this past year to support connections within our community. We have made a positive impact in the Albany community through this active participation in a variety of venues, meetings, and events. It has been a pleasure to continue to strengthen connections within Albany's diverse community through our commitment to the philosophy of inclusion, equal opportunity, fair treatment for all residents of Albany, and promoting harmonious relations amongst all citizens of Albany through all of our recommendations and support for activities and actions that lead to a positive and respectful interactions here within the community. So, in our report, we drafted up a history of our commission membership and attendance, along with our calendar of events from 2017, from all our meetings and the events that we have attended. I would love to answer any questions.
Questions? Would you like to introduce the members of the HRC that are here in attendance?
Yes. We have Chris, and we have Alice right here, and myself.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, anything else? Yeah, Jorge?
Yeah, just one comment. I just want to correct the record for the parade is Saturday, June 23rd at 10:00 a.m.
Oh, Saturday, June 23rd.
LGBT parade.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Perfect.
Yeah, okay. All right, anything, Chris?
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you so much for all of your support and being very active in our community and attending the events and, you know, even for the Latino Festival, and there was also at River Rhythms. And you are a busy group, so I really appreciate it. And then, are you going to stay around, Chris, since you're on the Community Development Block Grant Commission? Yeah, you got double duty tonight, so. All right, thank you. Okay, next would be, this is going to be continuation of the public hearings. So, for, this is for the extension of the Economic Improvement District in downtown Albany. So, for folks that are wondering what this is, there is a certain boundary district that is kind of levied a fee on the properties within the district of the downtown that pays for our park wise enforcement program. So, okay, all right. JC, did you have any reports to do on this first, or any?
I'm here.
And then Mike, okay.
So, still on? Sorry. I don't have anything new to report, other than there is an ordinance today to accept. There is language in there for the potential of a possible contract to be entered in with the ADA or the Albany Downtown Association. It's completely optional, the way it's written. So, either there's a yes or a no, just looking for some guidance from the city council is what they would like to do as far as the potential administrative fee charging the ADA.
Okay, all right. Any other thoughts, Lisa? Okay. All right, thank you. So, with that, this is a public hearing. Was there anyone that signed up, Allison, on our public hearings?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone that wanted to speak about the EID, the Economic Improvement District? Okay, all right. Not seeing anyone. With that, then, I will be closing the public hearing at 7:25 p.m. And with that, council, we do have an ordinance that's on page 28. And would you like our city attorney to read the first reading? Okay, away.
An ordinance creating an economic improvement district in accordance with ORS 223.112 through 223.132 and declaring an emergency.
Move to approve a second time, the title only.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, all right, second reading, please.
An ordinance creating an economic improvement district in accordance with ORS 223.112 through 223.132 and declaring an emergency.
Okay, questions?
Do you want to do a motion for?
Oh, motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, and now discussion.
I notice on our paperwork, exhibits, B, C, et cetera, et cetera, there's multiple instances of the site addresses, parcel address unknown. So, how can we be taxing an unknown address?
Kind of, from the Lynn County Tax Assessor's Office, that's kind of how the data pushes over. It, there can be multiple parcels of a lot that don't necessarily have a corresponding number associated with it, but it hasn't, as an owner, it's kind of odd how the data.
But, so it does have a legal address of some sort, then, doesn't it?
Yeah, and something that we can look into a little bit more. It's just how the data was presented and how we pulled it from the county assessor's office.
It seemed odd that there were so many of them. That's what I was concerned about, so.
Question.
Uh-huh.
With no available address, how are they getting the notification that they need to sign up or sign out?
So, there is an owner address associated with that parcel address. Even though the parcel maybe have an unknown, there is an owner that is associated with that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Statement, maybe.
Okay.
People downtown want to support the program, like, great, fine, do that. Part of it is a state issue problem for me, but the, the demand that someone get a piece of mail and then call and say, "I don't want to participate unless," and they're included unless they call and say that, is not right, as far as I'm concerned. So, I think this is going to pass without any trouble. If it doesn't, I'm going to have a problem, but that's my issue.
I will remind you that the ordinance states that.
State, doesn't make any difference.
That's just how the rules are written, and that's how we're following them.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, all right. And motion carried. So, actually, that's what they, 4-0 vote, or 4-1 vote, excuse me. Okay, all right, thank you. Yep, thank you, Lisa. And actually, Lisa, thank you for all the work, too, and being able to, you know, inform the business owners and discuss with them any of their concerns, and thank you. I know it's, every, every director that has been with the Downtown Association, this was kind of always their dreaded duty, was going through the EID process, and you made it very smoothly, so good job. Yeah, thank you. Okay. And next, on, for a public hearing, I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:29 p.m. This is for the opportunity to comment on proposed uses of state revenue sharing. And this is going to be for items 1A and B for this public hearing. Okay, and Gina, did you have any comments on this item?
No, this is just pretty much the same thing we do every year. We receive state share, state revenue from, well, the state, and we have been using it for streets. And we continue to plan to do that.
Okay.
Primarily just the gas tax, huh? Or it's other projects as well, that's right.
No, I'm sorry, we, transit. I'm sorry, we use it for transit, not for streets.
Yeah.
My, I apologize.
It's on the street, but.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Is there anyone that wanted to comment on the state revenue sharing two resolutions that we have this evening? Okay, not seeing anyone. With that, I'll close the public hearing at 7:30 p.m. And with that, council, you have a resolution on page 37. That's declaring the eligibility to receive state revenues.
Move to approve, second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. And then next, you have a resolution that's on page 38, and this is for declaring the city's election to receive state revenues.
Move to, second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, done with that public hearing. And now, I'll open the public hearing at the same time, at 7:30 p.m. And this is going to be for adopting the 2019-2023 Capital Improvement Program. So, Jeff, are you coming up this evening?
You have your armor on.
So, good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. Before you tonight is the resolution to adopt the 2019-2023 Capital Improvement Program. We had a work session on April 5th that we discussed about the draft. The public review went out in May, and we received no public comments again this year. The result of the long process is the resolution before you tonight for adoption. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions from the CIP? So, went very smooth this year. Didn't seem to have anything that was contentious, so good job on putting that plan together.
Oh, thanks, contentious.
Okay, is there anyone that wanted to comment on our capital improvement program, the five-year plan? Okay, not seeing anyone. I'll close the public hearing at 7:31 p.m. And council, you have a resolution on page 40.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, and any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Jeff. That was a quick one. Next, I am at 7:32 p.m. I'm going to open the public hearing for adopting the City of Albany's 2018-2019 annual budget. And, and this is the budget process that our budget committee, it's a 14-member budget committee, and we had three meetings, close to 10 hours of meetings of reviewing the city's budget. Gina, did you?
We do have changes to the budget from the proposed. And I think Shane can talk about it a little bit more, too. We are expecting to receive an additional $300,000 in funding from Millersburg, and I believe they are hoping to fund three positions with that. It's not official, but we have, it's more than likely that it will happen, so we have to budget for it. And that's in the general fund. And then, we also have a program in the grant fund for that Station 15 at Millersburg. Those are the only changes. It increases appropriations by $300,000.
Okay, all right. Any questions on that?
And those are included in here.
They are included in the sheets that you have, yes.
Okay. Is there anyone that wanted to, oh, go ahead, Mike.
But it's not for sure yet.
It's not, but it's more than likely it's going to happen, so we have to budget for it. It's Oregon budget law.
Authorization to spend, but not, not authorization for specific things.
Right. If we, if we don't budget for it now, and it's, and we know that it, it's more than likely to come, then we wouldn't be able to do a supplemental budget for it. We just would not have the appropriations for it next year.
And if it fell through, we'd have a supplemental budget?
If it fell through, we just wouldn't expend those monies.
Okay.
Okay, is there anyone that wanted to?
I don't think it'll fall through.
Is there anyone that wanted to comment on our 2018-2019 annual budget? Okay, not seeing anyone. With that, I will close the public hearing at 7:34 p.m. Mike, did you have another comment?
No, I just didn't hear what Dick said.
Oh, okay.
Oh, as you said, I don't think it'll fall through.
Okay, all right. Council, there's a resolution on page 47.
Move to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
I'm sorry.
Second, okay. And any more discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I voted against this at Budget Committee, not because people didn't do the due diligence and go through all the work and do what we asked them to do, because that's what they did. I do this to point out that we are headed down a road that we're not taking enough precautions to make sure we have all our ducks in a row. And to me, that is, we do not have, there is no one in the room that knows the most important thing we do and the least important thing we do. There needs to be some kind of system that staff can use to determine that. I realize that when the time comes, and if you say, "This is the most important, and that's the next important, and this is," you know, you get down to the bottom of that, this is nice to do, but it's not necessary. It's not mandatory. When there isn't enough money for something, everyone, that's the low hanging fruit, and so they want to do away with it. People don't want to have that happen. But we are probably at the, at the end of what it would normally be, the high part of, of our economy, because the economy is cyclical. Now, it doesn't look like it's going to heck in the handbasket right now, but when that time comes, and it will come, it would be far better for us to know what we have determined the most important thing is and the least important thing, so we're not just grabbing things. We're not just making off-the-cuff cuts. And for that reason, I'm sure there's going to be enough votes. I'm going to vote against it.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah.
Mike, and then Dick.
The question for Sean, our esteemed attorney, again, was, what happens if the budget doesn't pass?
If the budget doesn't pass, then you're not, the city, first of all, state requires the, the city pass the budget. The state law requires the city pass the budget. So, if the city doesn't pass the budget tonight, then they're going to have to come back and redo this again and go back to whatever, how many hours of work that was done before. Yeah, to, to get it done. Otherwise, you're going to be where you can't, some of the stuff that the city wouldn't be authorized to spend money on the budget, so.
Thank you.
But the state requires us to do it at some point.
I remember years back, it was very split vote. That's when Steve Wright was here as city manager, and we had to get one counselor on the phone to get enough votes to pass. Or other words, staff wasn't going to get their paychecks at the end of the month. So, pretty much, back then, and I don't know if that still happens today, but you pretty much were shut down, so, without having that budget.
Or you, or you have to change, you have to change the budget to get enough votes. You have to do something.
Right, but then you've got to reconvene back the budget committee and go through the process and.
We just changed it.
Yeah.
So.
We just.
We just changed that part.
We did just change it, but if we, if we don't have a budget by July 1st, then we don't operate.
Yeah, correct. That's the answer. That's what I was looking for.
Yeah, it's a shutdown, basically, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And in addition, by state law, it has to be balanced.
Yes.
Exactly, yeah, Dick?
Yeah, I'd like to reflect on some ancient history. When I was on the council in the 70s, we got up a budget, and we submitted it to the public. If the public liked it, they'd pass it. If they didn't like it, they'd refuse. A couple of times, we had to go three times to the public. And if you think that's fun, I'll tell you, it's not much fun. And I think it's one of the reasons why one city manager lost his job. And that leads into my thought that we have a council-manager-city government. It's up to the manager to present us with a budget. And that, he allows us to convince, and if he didn't, we probably wouldn't be happy, and he wouldn't serve our pleasure. But I have faith in our city manager, and I think we ought to let him present us with a budget and let him run the city as our charter suggested we do. That's my view.
Mayor. Staff has done what we asked them to do.
David?
It's exactly what he has done. It is the council that has not done this, it is not staff. Staff did what we asked them to do. It is the council that's not looking down the road far enough. That's, that's the issue that I have. I don't have an issue with staff. Staff did what they were asked to do.
Well, you've got a pessimistic, sour point of view of the future. I don't know as I do. I've got faith in the city manager, it's going to solve the problems as they arrive. I guess another opinion on that, Dick, would be the city manager's comments that the reserves are too low. And that's exactly what the reserves are for, is when the economy does change. So, even our city manager realizes we need more reserves. And it's up to him to, sure, ask us how to, or not ask us, but to recommend to us how we solve that problem. I guess my point is, I'm sorry, go ahead. Well, I'm agreeing with you that, yes, our reserves could be better. And I think we should be awaiting his suggestion as to how we handle that problem. I, I don't think it's pessimistic. I think it's realistic, is the way I would phrase it. What, that we get in and dabble in how to solve the reserve problem? No, it's, your comment was that, it was a pessim, if I understood you correctly, you thought it was a pessimistic outlook on the economy. Maybe I misunderstood. I think you did. Yeah, I'm saying, Rich looks down the road, and he sees us headed for disaster, apparently.
I just recognize it's happened a lot of times, Dick. We're past the time now that it's always happened in the past.
To the City of Albany, have we had a disaster?
The economy has.
Oh, I agree, yes, we've come through it.
I mean, we're, we've got a $50 million hole in our pot of money. That's just a fact.
That's a little misleading statement. That's more, you're talking about $50 million up towards more street needs, capital improvement needs.
Well, if streets are unimportant, then, you're correct. It's not a big deal. If they are important, then there is something we need to do about that.
We're not in the.
I'm not, I'm not trying to quibble about that.
I agree. We tried a gas tax, some didn't support it, someone in this council didn't support it. I think it should have been.
Yep, that could have helped. Okay, we do have a motion and a second, and on, for the resolution on page 47 for adopting our annual budget. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, could we get a roll call?
Allison?
Oh, yes.
Sykes?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kellum?
No.
Kupczynski?
Yes.
Coburn?
No.
We have three forward, three against.
Three against, okay, now, of course, I am voting yes for our budget. Okay, so it passes four, three. All right. Okay, so next, we have another public hearing, and this will be at almost 7:45 p.m. Then I will open the public hearing, and this one's for the opportunity to comment on the proposed Community Development Block Grant 2018-2022 Consolidated Plan and 2018 Action Plan. Ann, would you like to do the staff report?
Thank you, Mayor, councilors. My name is Ann Catlin. I work in the Community Development Department. And tonight, I'm here to talk a little bit about what the Community Development Block Program is and our upcoming five-year plan, and next year's action plan, and preview some of the work that's been done over the last five years. So, Community Development Block Grant Program is a program that the Department of Housing and Urban Development manages. We receive a formula grant from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and we began receiving this at the end of 2013. So, we're entering into our sixth year coming up as an entitlement community. So, every year, we get between $380,000 and $410,000. And we are charged to satisfy the primary program objectives of the Community Development Block Grant Program, which are to provide decent housing, equitable living environment, and expanded economic opportunities. And this is primarily to benefit low and moderate income residents, which is defined as residents that earn less than. as residents that earn less than eighty percent of our area median income. So the, um, CDBG, abbreviated, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, it's a lot easier to say, program requires quite a few things of the city, and I'll just go over those briefly since I don't get to visit with you that often, and so everyone else knows as well. So we do have to develop a five-year strategic plan, and tonight, our next five-year strategic plan covering years two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-two is in your agenda packet. Every year, we develop an action plan, which determines how our annual grant will be used to meet the goals and objectives from our five-year plan. Then we are also required to prepare a fair housing assessment. We did this in two thousand and fourteen, and we'll be working on updating our assessment this year. About every five years, we need to update that. And then there's lots of regulatory compliance, uh, fair housing laws, civil rights laws, the labor standards, environmental. So there's a lot of, um, rules, regulations that we already mostly follow as a city, but it is a little bit of extra paperwork and work. And every year, we do prepare a report to HUD on our progress and also give that report to you. And then citizen participation, of course, is very important in developing our community needs that could be addressed with this funding. And the, um, the program requires that we have a citizen particip- participation plan and hold two public hearings. And this is one of those annual public hearings, and we will hold another one, um, in August or September. But, uh, we have done a lot of community outreach. The, um, Community Development Commission, and I actually, before I forget, I, we have some commissioners here. I thought I would go ahead and have them stand up. We have, um, the chair is Joe Zimmer, and we also have Chris Equinoa serving on the commission. He's the Human Relations Liaison. And then Karen Cardo sits here from the, um, housing industry. Thank you for serving. So, uh, over the years, they meet monthly and meet with almost every agency in town that does, and outside of town, that does work in Albany to serve our loans from residents and also evaluates requests for funding proposals. And so they try to figure out how to make the best use of a limited amount of funding and do the most good. So the public hearing tonight, I've already covered what, what it's about, but it's primarily the five-year plan, next year's action plan, and then it's an opportunity just to identify any future community needs that maybe have been missed or overlooked, or to stress the priority of some needs, and then assess the city's performance to date. I did want to say that tonight, you will not be adopting the plans. At the next council meeting, June twenty-seventh, you will be asked to pass a resolution to adopt both of these plans, but I do need to incorporate all the public comments into the plans. So we want to have a public hearing tonight, and the comment period ends at the end of next week, so I want to make sure we have time to incorporate comments. And so far, to date, I've received one letter in support from Charlie Mitchell, uh, the Small Business Development Center at Lynn Benton Community College, and it's on your dais, and he expresses his support for, uh, the program and the partnership that is proposed in the action plan to provide small business development and micro enterprise assistance through our program at Lynn Benton. So there is a lot of data in your package. A lot of that is provided by the, by HUD, as well as census data and local community data, and I thought I'd just share a few highlights for the community. So Albany has quite a few low mod households. Those are the households earning less than eighty percent. We have about thirty-seven percent of all of our households back, and this is back in two thousand and thirteen. Of these, uh, we have over five thousand households that are considered housing cost burdened. That means that they pay more than thirty percent of their income on housing-related costs. And of those, we have almost three thousand residents that pay more than fifty percent of their house, of their income on housing costs. And with the housing market going up, I'm sure those numbers are probably also going up. Minorities tend to experience housing cost burden and other housing problems at a greater rate than, uh, white residents. And we do have, um, some affordable housing, about five hundred and sixty affordable, publicly supported affordable housing units, and then the Lynn Benton Housing Authority provides nine hundred and forty-seven Albany households with housing vouchers, but there's almost twelve hundred households on the waiting list. So, um, affordable housing is our primary issue, uh, that we are trying to address with the limited funding. Homelessness is another issue. Um, the gaps, uh, they do an annual count of their homeless population, and so does, um, Community Services Consortium does a countywide count, and so we have, you know, about three hundred kids in school that are considered homeless, and then about a hundred and eighty others in Lake County, most of them being an old woman. And the elderly, um, we are an aging population and staying older and living longer, but they constitute about twenty-three percent of our, um, households or seniors. So based on this background data, the commission developed some goals that we hope to use CDBG funds towards over the next five years, and these really continue the goals in the first five, five-year plan. We do want to provide more affordable housing opportunities. There are a couple ways that we'll do that, as well as preserve our existing affordable housing stock. It's really important that we keep that in our inventory, um, and improve existing, um, housing. Reduce homelessness, support our low and moderate income and special needs residents with public services, provide economic opportunities so people make more income to afford their livelihood, improve access to opportunities for services, schools, jobs, and then accessibility in general. And then remove blighting influences in neighborhoods. And we, we've spent a lot of, um, effort in identifying what we can do with these funds to make a, a big impact, and I'll play about this in a minute. So in two thousand and eighteen, we're proposing, uh, to support a homeowner down payment assistance program. We just started that this year with Willamette Neighborhood Housing and Lynn Benton Housing Authority. In continuing that, as well as property acquisition, we're trying to acquire the most blighted properties, um, in partnership with another agency. Actually, the first one is with Habitat for Humanity, so that we can remove blighting influences and create an opportunity for new affordable housing. And then improving our existing affordable housing through low, through, uh, homeownership loans to low mod residents and their deferred zero interest loans. Removing blight, I, I mentioned property acquisition, but public improvements, you'll see the map there is just sort of the center of the city is in the darker orange and red. That's where we can spend, uh, Community Development Block Grant funds to improve, um, public infrastructure or facilities, because they will have an impact on areas that have been identified by HUD as being low income. We will be supporting Jackson Street Youth Shelter and Signs of Victory Mission with youth management and shelter operations to try to prevent and reduce homelessness. And, uh, other public services, child abuse prevention, uh, with Family True Relief Nursery providing that service. Then food boxes, furniture, and beds will be provided through Furniture Share, and we are offering support to the senior companion program that Cascade West Council Government runs. Then enhancing economic opportunities, already mentioned, at the Lynn Benton Community College, we'll be able to offer free assistance and courses to low and moderate income residents that are interested in, um, starting a business or that already own a business. So just to real quick highlight some of what has happened over the last five years, or almost five years. We have been rehabilitating both single-family and multifamily housing. Uh, we have got one homeowner, a new homeowner, but a couple are in works, and the housing market isn't the greatest to run that program right now, but it is still happening. We have supported, uh, the Jackson Street Youth Shelter, helped that get open, as well as Albany Helping Hands, too. Houses, um, were acquired for more transitional housing. In public services, we've supported quite a few agencies, with a variety of services that are listed there, primarily to address and prevent homelessness, but also to help people, um, with jobs and life skills. Economic opportunities, we've helped a lot of residents, um, start businesses, as well as existing businesses, uh, learn more about how to run their business. And then fair housing and access to opportunities, we've had a few trainings, some have been in conjunction with Community Services Consortium on fair housing laws, just so that people are aware of what their rights are, or as a landlord, what their rights are. Then, uh, some of the city managed projects have been focused, the public improvement projects have been focused on removing barriers to accessibility, so we've done a few sidewalk improvements and path improvements, as you can see listed there. In the most recent, Dave Clark, we fixed a stretch of sidewalk and added some curb ramps there, and then the best one, almost done, is Sunrise Park, and this was our last city park that had not been rehabilitated and remodeled, and it had unsaved and dated equipment, and the buildings were vandalized. And so if you have not been out there, it's supposed to wrap up this speaker next week, and that's a, a week old picture, I think. So Sunrise Park was, um, is right in the center of that map and was identified by the community as a need and was also one of our priority needs here at the city, and that will add a parking lot, all new playground equipment, and really change the feel of that neighborhood. So that, I'll answer your questions if you have those before people who've been...
I bet you're seeing the look on Chris's face. Aren't you pleased to see the Sunrise Park remodel? Isn't that looking great?
Yeah. We've been working on that for several years, and, uh, fruition is really wonderful.
Yeah. Oh, I know. That just looks great.
I, I think the best part about it was the fact that the community has such an involved piece of this, and, and coming to meetings and expressing their concerns and sharing what their wants were. Would have been nice if we'd been able to meet all the wants, but nonetheless, uh, we have taken the chance and modeled it down and worked with the main information that has happened. I don't want to see another wetlands project ever again.
Yeah.
But, uh, certainly, it, it's a testament to the way that things should happen where places that need happen.
Yeah. Great. Thank you. Okay, um, so the public hearing is open, and, um, is there anyone that would like to comment on this plan? And I did know we had a sign-up sheet, so are you Lisa? Liza? Liza, okay. And then Clarice, I think you've, you're down, too.
Good evening. My name is Liza Ducom, and I'm the Housing Rehabilitation Manager at Willamette Neighborhood Housing Services.
Address?
I'm sorry?
Your address?
Uh, two five seven Southwest Madison Avenue number one one three, Corvallis, Oregon, nine seven three three three.
Thank you.
Um, so I just have a few comments. So, but before I start reading what was written for me, I just want to say that I think this program is, um, very vital to a community, and it's not just Albany, but communities across the state that the Community Development Block Grant helps. There are people who have to make a choice between paying their mortgage or fixing a leaky roof or buying food for their family. And that's where our program comes in and provides them with a no-interest, no-payment loan for a thirty-year term, and then they're able to fix their home so that they can stay there. So it increases the affordable housing stock by keeping people who are low and moderate income in their homes, and reduces homelessness in the same way. So everyone deserves to live in a community of opportunity, in a good, affordable home, with access to the neighborhood resources we all need to do well. We're in a housing crisis, and the hardworking, low and moderate income homeowners of Albany are having to make tough choices, as I just said. We know that housing gives people an opportunity to build better lives, and to succeed, you need a place to call home. Working with the City of Albany, Willamette Neighborhood Housing Services has directed critical Community Development Block Grant, Grant funds to address deteriorating housing stock and address income inequities by offering down payment assistance to first-time homebuyers. I'm here in support of the Consolidated Plan and Action Plan goals of two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-two that create and preserve affordable housing, reduce homelessness, provide needed public services, enhance economic opportunities, and increase accessibility for all community members. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Liza. Thank you so much. Okay, um, Clarice?
Well, um, dear Mayor and city councilors, my name is Clarissa Morin-Fredas, and I live on seven two eight Montgomery Street Southeast, Albany, Oregon, nine seven three two one. Um, I also coordinate the Lynn Benton Health Deputy Alliance, which is one of four regional health deputy coalitions in the state of Oregon, and our coalition works to ensure that everyone in Lynn and Benton counties is able to lead a healthy life, regardless, regardless of their background or circumstances. I'm here today to speak on behalf of our coalition regarding the Albany CDBG Consolidated and Action Plans. Um, we support this program, and we believe this program is of extreme value to our community, and we really commend the City of Albany for investing in it. Our coalition knows that health begins where we live, and we believe that all Oregonians deserve a safe, stable, and affordable place to call home. Having a place to call home, however, has become increasingly hard across communities in our state. Just today, I read the Out of Reach Report from the National Low Income Housing Coalition, and it states that in order to afford a simple two-bedroom apartment in Albany, a person must have a full-time job that pays at least seventeen dollars and fifty cents an hour. This means that one out of every three households in our city are currently struggling to afford rent. As rents and property costs rises, families, seniors, peoples with, people with disabilities, and vulnerable neighbors must make unfair choices, like choosing between paying rent or putting food on the table, paying rent or visiting, visiting the doctor and buying medication, paying rent or paying utilities, um, like electricity and water, both of which are essential. While the struggle to afford housing affects our whole community, I would also like to take a few minutes today to remind you that some of our neighbors are more vulnerable than others. In the interest of time, I will focus on one group, which are Latinos. Albany has a large Latino population. In fact, about one out of every twelve residents of Albany belongs to a Zedney group. Albany Latinos are disproportionately impacted by the housing crisis that we are experiencing. One in three Latino residents lives in poverty, as opposed to one in six white residents. Disparities also exist in homeownership. Sixty-six percent of Albanese white residents own their homes, while only forty-one percent of Latino residents own their homes. We also know that homeownership is one of the key and most essential ways in which our families build wealth over time and also pass wealth across generations. And this means the Latino families in our community are more likely to struggle to afford safe and stable homes and would benefit greatly from additional attention on the part of the CDBG program. There are several ways in which the CDBG program can better serve Latino neighbors. We know of many local organizations in our region that serve the needs of Latinos and that can help spread the word about CDBG opportunities across this community. Our coalition would be happy to serve as a connection between the City of Albany and its local partners. We also cannot emphasize enough the importance of making the program and its projects both culturally and linguistically accessible by providing easy access to professionally translated materials and by encouraging the hiring of bilingual and bicultural staff. Linguistic and cultural barriers often explain why you may not hear directly from these vulnerable Latino neighbors, and lifting these barriers is the first step to address their needs. In closing, we thank you for supporting the CDBG program and the work that it has done in our community over the years, and we encourage the CDBG program to continue to further explore how to become an even more inclusive and equitable initiative by focusing its energy and investments where there is the greatest need in our community. The Lynn Benton Health Deputy Alliance would be happy to provide input and support in that direction. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Clarice. Thank you so much. Okay. Um, it'd be kind of nice, I think, maybe for the council to see the agencies that are here, or, um, supportive service agencies, if they just wanted to stand and introduce themselves. I recognize some of you here. Annie? You can leave.
I'm Annie McDonald, and I'm the Housing Services Manager for the Albany Partnership for Housing and Community Development.
She does, does a great job and, um, in really helping to run the organization that Ann Catlin and I oversee, and, um, were wonderful. And you're also a part of the Lynn Benton, um, the...
Academy Alliance.
Academy Alliance also. So, yeah, thank you. Thank you for your service. Okay, anyone else?
George Matlin, Signs of Victory.
So, okay, all right. Is that it? Yeah. Okay, all right. Thank you. Um, so anyone else that would like to speak on the, um, CDBG Consolidated Plan? Okay, all right. So I'll close that public hearing at eight oh five PM, but council, you will not be taking action on this, and, like she said, we'll be gathering further comments if there's any that comes through, and we'll have a final... And we'll have a final document at the next counseling meeting.
Mayor.
Uh-huh. Oh, Mike?
When can we ask questions?
Oh, you can ask right now, yeah.
The lady that gave the presentation, I have a couple, I have a question.
To Ann?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh-huh.
You said that, you stated that you get about $300,000 a year. Is that correct?
That's about how much goes out to the community. It varies every year. We don't know how much we get, but we've been getting between $380,000 and $410,000 per year.
A year?
Per year.
So what's the percentage that gets to the community? And what's the, or the other question would be, what is the percentage of cost for overhead out of that $410,000? How much goes to overhead and how much actually gets to the people?
So 80% goes out to other agencies or directly to projects, and we are allowed to keep aside 20%, which covers the administration of the program and all advertising, translation services, training, et cetera, all of our overhead administrative costs.
But the other agencies that you distribute funds to, do they have administrative fees also?
Of course.
So, public services can use their funds primarily, they're paying for staff people to work directly with the community members. The housing rehabilitation and homebuyer programs, we do have a per, a performance amount that we pay per house that's purchased or a house that's renovated. And it's way less than 20%, but...
So after all said and done, is it 20% or is it some number larger than 20% for administrative fees? Because you're distributing it to other agencies that have payrolls and everything else. And what I'm looking for is for the number that's actually getting to the people in need out of that $410,000. What's that percentage?
Well, I, I'll get my calculator, but it's about $10,000 more that is going out in fees on top of the 20%. So it's 23% maybe, or 24, it would vary depending on, you know, which year and how many, how much money we were giving to the other agencies. Yep. But those are eligible expenses to manage the program.
Do you want to mention how much is actually for public services that we have in the plan?
Yeah, 15%.
That amount. 15, so 15% of it is actually going for public services. That could be going for some staffing on that. The other, other pieces like we had, the parks improvements, you know, capital improvements, things like that.
Yeah, I mean, you have to design and build and pay for some labor costs there as well for the public improvements, but it is not that much. I mean, considering the number of people that we are impacting with the funds, I think that we're trying to be as conscientious as we can with the funds and keep overhead costs as low as possible.
I was just interested in that percentage.
I would say around 25%.
Bill?
So, I want to understand if I heard you correctly, Mayor. You said that some of the Community Development Block Grant money is being used for parks?
The portion of it was for redoing Sunrise Park. That was mentioned. That was for...
Construction project.
For the construction project on that. So some of it can, and some's been used for like sidewalk improvements. But what 15% is for public service agencies, and then, and then some is for housing kind of rehab, and then it would be for public infrastructure. I think some you have down for the Dave Clark path was some Dave Clark path for ADA accessibility improvements.
Right.
So I know those are all needs, but if you were to prioritize those, I think you'd put 100% of the money into housing, fixing the homes and roofs and getting people off the street. I mean, I don't understand how fixing a park or a path helps people who don't have a place to live.
You know, Bill, if I could address that for just a second?
Sure. Can you come up? Chris, yeah.
Chris Equino, I've been here before. Bill, the reason that that was a significant program that caught the eye of the CDGB committee or commission was because it was also involved in a blighted area within our community. And so consequently, when we heard from the neighbors and when we heard from even the schoolchildren, what would be of the best benefit to help you within this particular area, that was one of the number-one priorities that they spoke to us about. And what it did was it increased opportunities for those families to get together in a safe environment, to be supported within the community, feeling supported from the city council and from the city in general, to go ahead and make sure that they were included as part of this community. Their involvement, their suggestions, their impact, they went out of their way to make sure that they had an opportunity to go ahead and share their concerns and for their concerns to be addressed and met went light years for this community in terms of addressing the blighted areas and also low economic areas within our community and showing them that they deserve these same kinds of things that other areas in our community have.
Bill, if you look on page 62, it kind of does show what the priority is, and the top on that would be for affordable housing, permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, rental assistance. So there is a part of the plan of even looking at trying to be able to provide more low-income affordable housing too. And that's something that, even with Albany Partnership, is looking at trying to expand capacity to being able to get some, you know, low-income housing also. That is the one thing that we find to be able to get, you know, there's a lot of housing being built, but is it affordable to people that are at that poverty level? And there's not too many housing providers that are out there that are providing low enough income for people to be able to afford.
Well, I'd like to piggyback off of what Bill was saying about the Dave Clark path. They have a Parks Department, I believe, that built that path, and the city paid for it. So why are we using funds that could better go for housing to fix a path? I understand what you said, sir, but notwithstanding, that is something that the Parks Department should be taking care of, not using funds from another area that could be better spent, in my opinion, on housing. So I'm kind of piggybacking off of what Bill said. So I don't understand that.
Yeah.
But I'm new, so there's a lot of things I don't understand.
But that is the priority that is coming up. So Bill, and then I think Ann wanted to address some of the comments, I mean, Ray.
Well, I remember when I first had the CDVG funding come in, I was on the board to help, and there was lots of meetings trying to fire out what the priorities were. And it was the same type of discussions we have with our budgets. What are the priorities? And how do we spend a limited amount of dollars on the areas that have, there's more demand than there's possible dollars? And so some of those things had to get ranked, some of them had to get dropped off, some of them rose, some of them, and I don't think that process has changed. It's, I mean, each year you have to go through the same process that we do, and it's the same angst that we have. How do you establish a priority? Who gets to make the determination? But once it's made, that's how the funding is then dispersed.
Staff makes our priorities.
So can I just respond? And I can make a suggestion. Thank you for your comments, and this is exactly why we want to hear from you as well. So we are trying to, the Community Development Commission and staff, working with...
Move the microphone closer, Ann.
Trying to ramp up...
Move the mic closer to your mouth.
Way close.
Way close.
It'll move, yeah.
Okay, all right, like this.
Now, we got to get better microphone system here.
Well, usually whenever I touch it, then it...
Yeah.
So it takes a while to actually acquire property, to build new affordable housing. So we've tried to figure out what programs can we offer right away? What partnerships do we have in place? And then we have funds that are set aside for housing rehabilitation, homebuyer down payment assistance, so that we get people into homeownership. And with the housing market the way it is, I mean, it's taking a little bit longer right now to actually find homes that people can afford to buy, even after saving a lot of money and getting that assistance. And as well as the housing rehabilitation, you would think that people would jump on a zero-interest deferred loan to get their house fixed so they can stay in their house. But things aren't moving as quickly as you might think for that program. So last year, we allocated some money to try to acquire one of our dilapidated properties. I'm not sure how much it's going to take to get one property. We're working on, with Habitat for Humanity, to acquire some of our trailers that are in the area near the water treatment plant, because we think those would also remove some blinding influences. And that's really just begun in feeling out whether owners are interested in selling. We have money set aside to try to acquire one more, but there is some funding set aside for accessibility improvements, which is in the right of way, because we've had complaints about accessibility and funds have not been readily available to make those improvements. So the Dave Clark path was actually a complaint from somebody who needed it to be more accessible. And some of that got fixed, but it didn't quite get finished. And so one of the priorities with the federal government is to make sure that all of our amenities are accessible, safe routes to school. So 19th Avenue didn't have sidewalks. We did several blocks of sidewalks so that low-income residents could get to school safely. The park was, we don't have enough money to fix a lot of houses and impact a lot of families. So the first years, we decided to invest in some of the public infrastructure. We don't see any big public infrastructure projects coming down the pipeline in the next five years, and we are trying to put most of the money towards housing. But to build something or buy something, we need a couple years of $100,000s to do that. So we're trying to figure out, how do we meter out, because we don't know how much money we're getting every year, and then how do we do that? So there is one, there's a little bit more funding needed for Sunrise Park, which is related to, the costs are just really expensive. But we do need to finish a path that goes through the trees and make it safer and add some lighting. But there was another little bit of money set aside for accessibility improvements, because there's so many areas without sidewalk in case a complaint came in. But we can move that into housing acquisition, and we can amend what's before you and change it for, you know, two weeks from now. Because I agree, we're trying to address affordable housing slowly, but every house that is built or every household that is assisted is making a dent. And then homelessness is another issue. So 20% is overhead administration, 15% is public services. That leaves you with, you know, 65, 65% that all that could go, most of that could go towards housing. But other, people need jobs too. So it's a hard balance, but we are trying to do more with housing over the next five years.
Any other thing?
Yes.
Yeah?
I was just chuckling to myself, 65% of $400,000 fixes one house. I mean, it's, yeah, it's, it's just, yeah, it's, it's, we have our finger in the dike and there's a four-foot, a four-foot pipe throwing, throwing water through the middle of the dike. It'll be interesting on the 20th to see what happens at the housing side.
Right. I mean, it can be a good leverage, you know, for to be able to make some, you know, affordable housing projects, you know, pencil out. So sort of like Albany Partnership's Life Skills Housing, that's, you know, serving some folks that are under mental health management. You know, if you found another, you know, Lynn County Mental Health would love us to expand more if you found a house, but all of a sudden it was going to be needing some upgrades or maybe a new roof, that could be able to help leverage dollars for that. So I think, you know, I think the amount that we do have, we would be able to get, you know, some accomplished. Was that?
We could put it in the old church.
Yeah, so, yeah.
And I would just comment that with respect to the Dave Clark path and Sunshine Park, that the Parks Department is responsible for them, but we have in the Parks Department a multimillion-dollar backlog of maintenance. So when things aren't done, and when specific projects are also falling into the category of a priority that the Community Development Commission has, they could then, if I understand correctly, then they can then choose to support that project. It's not an abdication of the Parks Department's responsibility. It's simply that the Community Development Commission feels it's important enough that they want to take some of their funds and address it. Correct?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah. It happened to be that the community number-one priority happened also beyond the Parks Department's list, and they didn't have funds to fix Sunrise Park, for example. So, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all right. So you'll be taking public comment and then bring that back, yeah.
Would you like me to move some of the funds that we have set aside for not-yet-identified accessibility improvement in 2018 towards property acquisition or one of the other housing programs? My fear is that I'm trying to make sure we're spending the money in a regular pace, and some projects are just hard to get off the ground, like actually buying a property in this market, for example, could be challenging. And then we still have some carryover funds in housing rehab, but we do hope that, you know, we will be caught up by the end of the year. So if you'd like us to do that, I'd be happy to do that. I think the commission would do that. We thought that we might be getting some requests for some other public improvements that...
So it'd be for 2018, then, just moving...
Yeah, this first year.
Additional into, for housing acquisition or, yeah. Would the council like to see that shifted in, or?
I'm not going to micromanage that.
No?
No?
And I'm not, I'm just making observations, you know, it's, you hear some of the stories in the reports, you know, food or the leaky roof, or the lady was speaking about Latinos and how their, their situation's even worse. It just, in my mind, the priority shifts pretty quickly to housing. So I understand what Chris was saying about Sunrise Park and the programs, and so much can go towards these things. But it gets right back to what Rich was talking about, about our city budget. I just think when you prioritize these things, some of them float to the top, and it seems like that's where the emphasis should be. But on the other hand, you got several balls in the air you're trying to juggle, and there's value to what was done at Sunrise Park. So I, I don't envy you and your job. I guess I don't really have any recommendations. You're listening to me, and I appreciate that, but...
I do know the Community Development...
My recommendation, I guess, would be to shift more towards housing. But, I mean, we're going in circles here, because you're saying that there isn't that much money to really go out and buy properties. Do you save money for two or three years and do nothing else?
Well, that's why you need to have a few things going. And every year, we will be creating an action plan, and then if you need to modify a previous year's action plan because something is not happening in a timely manner, or having challenges with spending money and accomplishing something, then we can amend. For example, this year's action plan, we can amend that next year or during the year and make, we have to have a public hearing and notice that. But it is a juggling act, and we are trying to respond to a lot of need out there. So, yeah.
Rich? Is this one of those programs that you have to spend a certain amount of it or you lose it?
We're allowed to carry over some money, but you're only allowed to have a certain percentage carried over before you might risk getting funding. And so we do try to keep programs moving. And I've got a plan for five years. I'm trying to figure out, okay, in the first years, we could try to acquire property and then hope that we have a partnership with an agency to build housing. We're trying to work with our partners to identify any other outside funding sources that might be able to come in to develop housing or something like that. I think the accessory dwelling units changes are going to help add a little bit here and there. But it, it takes a while to figure out what to do, and we're constantly looking at what the need is and what's ready to go right now.
What's the percentage that you can hold on to?
You can have up to 1.5 times your annual allotment, and of course, the annual allotment changes. So if, let's just use $400,000, you could have $600,000.
Okay. So it's, you're not, my, the salient point of that would be, if you have $400,000 now and you could keep it all over one year until you got to $600,000... now, and you could keep it all over one year, until you got to 600,000, before you had to make sure you spent it, or next time, you wouldn't get any. I mean, I'm not in favor of that kind of economics, where, you know, spend it because they'll give me more if I spend it. But, I mean, we're not in danger of that at this point.
Right. It took several years of funding for Sunrise to happen, if we also wanted to provide people with an opportunity to take courses at Lynn County College and do housing rehab. So, it took a couple of years of funding for Sunrise Park. The funds that we have set aside for accessibility improvements, I've actually got it planned to do a little bit more in 2019, so that we have enough to do one project that's worthwhile to go out to bid for. And there had been some questions about helping with Washington Street. I mean, we don't know that that will be needed, but there was a request from Public Works about that. So, we are trying to look at how we can kind of take two years of funding, and straddle, you know, June 30th and July 1st, and do a project with two years of funding in September kind of thing. So, but right now, we also are off to a late start, because the federal budget came out late, and that happened last year, too. So, we are looking at how to take a couple years of funding to put towards a project, but keeping mindful of still needing to spend some money, so we don't, you know, risk getting future funds.
Yeah, Ray?
I kind of liken Anne and her team having a five-year plan, it's kind of like we task the city manager to come up with a strategic plan, which goes for five years, which gets modified each year. And it's, if we don't like it, it's up to us to challenge that, not challenge it after the fact when it's ready to go.
So, you can carry over some money from year to year. Could you carry over money each year for four or five years, to where you've got a significant amount of money to do something on housing?
Yeah. We can have some in the bank. It's just hard to know exactly what's going to, how the spending's going to work. So, we could have about 400, 500,000 in the bank, but I mean, we'd have to be, make sure that it was spent in that next year, if something, you know, happens, then we would be at risk. That's what we've been doing with Sunrise. So, we've had, it's about 300,000-plus dollars go to Sunrise, and it took several years of funding, and we were able to spend a little bit of money towards some of the designs, landscape architect, and expenses before construction. But now, we're spending 280,000 in a really short time period, and we also just did the Dave Clark project. So, we had 300,000 to 350,000 saved up, just to complete those public improvements that have been identified, you know, in the plan, in our last five-year plans. And we needed to save up the money to do that. So, we have been trying to do that, and we're, like I said, I'm trying to acquire property now, and then have some money available to help with property improvement, whether it's water sewer lines or something, or maybe we put all of our money towards acquiring property. But there's still housing rehab needs and homebuyer needs, and those programs, eventually, those will build up a revolving loan fund, we're hoping, so that we won't need to fund those programs, they'll self-fund each other. But we are trying to do that. There's just a lot of demand. There's, but housing is definitely the top priority for the commission, and figuring out what can actually happen in the first year and the next five years is what we've tried to do.
So, maybe, Anne, what you could do is see if there's any amount that you see that could be shifted to housing, maybe just let the, you know, send an email out to the Community Development Commission and the council, and just, and then see. Then the council can, you know, at the, when we go to adopt it, adjust the numbers at that meeting, if we, if they felt they, you know, needed to. The Community Development Commission, though, they do meet monthly, I mean, all year, and go through all of the programs and the priorities. So, there's a lot of thought put into this plan. I mean, it's, it's pretty much, most of it is Anne. She has to do the hard part of getting all this text done on 150 pages here. So, I really appreciate all the work that you do, Anne, in putting this document together, and also the members that put in, you know, give a lot of guidance, and trying to be able to serve our community the best we can with the amount of resources. So, does that sound okay, council, for the next meeting, or to update of what she sees could be flexible in those funds? So, okay.
I'll put that in the memo, that will go out with your packet, what I suggest. I think there's $58,000 that can move over from accessibility improvements to housing.
Okay. I did close the public hearing, but I see somebody's wanting to speak. I can open it, but I just would have to re-close it. Okay. So, I'll reopen the public hearing back up at 8:30 PM. Anne, yes, you wanted to speak? You need to come forward.
My name's Tim Vaughn. I live-
Come up to the microphone, please. Okay. You'll need to come, state your name and address, and if you can spell the last name.
My name's Tim Vaughn. I live at 532 Baker Street, right behind the fire station.
Put the microphone-
Could you use the microphone?
Or get both? Sorry. Yeah. I was just wondering, on the last conversation, how much of that, how much of that is state-funded money, and how much of that is city-funded money? The 400,000, maybe?
It's all federal.
It's all, does the city help match any of that?
No. It's all federal funds. These are all HUD dollars.
With the spring of the past.
Just a question, you know, I think, as a city, wouldn't you want to help your minorities on a fund of your own of some sort?
Uh-huh. Right, yeah. So, they're all federal dollars, and that's kind of what, you know, Anne was stating. We have to end up having a plan showing that we're going to be spending it, or we would not receive those dollars. If we're, and we can't use it for any other types of city programs. It has, there's a lot of regulation of what it can be spent on.
Oh, I see. Only thing, I was wondering if the city would somehow match, like, 10% of what the state is giving? Just-
Uh-huh. Oh, you mean to increase?
Yeah. I was just curious. Is that-
That is something that the city council-
Or 5%? Or, you know, a nickel?
Right. They could do matching, but say, like, the parks improvements were matching dollars that came from the Parks Fund also. You know, so some of the other street-type improvements did pass some dollars that helped, you know, make those projects go through. But the public services piece is strictly out of the Community Development block grant funds, on the public services.
As you may recall, I did renovation on my home-
Right.
-a little over, about 10, almost 10 years ago, something like that.
Very nice job, so, yeah.
But I would think, in the rest of the community, if you had some kind of a program that would, because now, I rent a few rooms, and now, that's part of a business, and I'm paying the other assessment to help the community. So, that kind of, I don't know if-
Right. And we do have the urban renewal also. This area's in the urban renewal district, too, as you remember with your place on Baker.
Right. Which helped out quite a bit. And to comment on the parks, that Parkway, I take the walk down there every day, it's beautiful. And I've seen all the work and development that was done there, and it's very nice.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Tim. Since I do have the public hearing reopened, was there anyone else that wanted to make a comment? Yes, Rex?
My name's Rex Watkins. I live at 507 Burkhardt Street, southeast, one of our blighted neighborhoods in Albany, around the corner from an Albany Partnership property. Many years ago, the city parks, through some rotary funds, were able to remodel our park for us, and we felt the same way. We thought that was great. Until they didn't maintain it anymore, which is Peter's getting at, with regards to limited availability for the Parks Department. So, my hope is that these monies aren't used to fix something up, and then it just gets run down. And that's why I want to go with the conversation about using these monies for the city to buy housing. No offense to the people sitting here, but government hasn't shown a very good job of purchasing properties, and then maintaining them to the best of their ability. And if it's housing we're talking about, as a person who takes care of 155 rental properties in the Albany and Carvallis area, we're held to a standard. My wonder is whether or not, with the available funds, those properties could be held to the same standard. That would be smarter to use those monies for loans for people who already own homes and can't maintain them. As a member of the Board of Property Tax Appeals for Lynn County, I can't tell you how many people come every year to tell us how they can't afford to pay their property taxes. They're making those same choices between paying their property taxes, letting the house go into a default, putting on a roof, painting the outside, buying their groceries. I would suggest that perhaps this group have application forms available at the counter at the assessor's office. They would be happy to hand those applications out for zero-interest loans to people who can't afford to pay their property taxes. And let me tell you, from some of the pictures of the properties that we get to see when they're trying to appeal their property tax value, these places need a lot of help. If there was, if those people who were going to the county office with homes inside the city limits of Albany knew that there was some funds available for them to use to fix their homes up, so they didn't have to wait for some local contractor who had a moment of generosity, several of whom are doing that kind of thing here in Albany, free roofs, free paint, free carpet, et cetera. But that can only go so far. Be a great place to put an application form, try to sell the idea there, help people who are already in their homes stay in their homes. And I'm not a big fan of paying for their down payment, people who don't own homes. But if we can do that, to me, that'd be a much bigger help than buying a place and renting it as the city. It's my two cents, or maybe my nickel worth. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Inflation.
Anyone else would like to comment on the plan? Okay. All right. With that, so, it is, so, 8:37 PM, and I will close the public hearing again. And with that, so, Anne, then we will be, any other questions? Council have of Anne? Okay. And then, you'll bring this back in two weeks. Okay?
Bob will bring it back in two weeks.
Oh, you'll be on vacation, Anne?
And a boy, Bob.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, folks, so much. So, thank you. Okay. All right. With that, let me switch all these pages here. Okay. Next is item five. This one's going to be over system development charges. So, I'm going to take 5A through H, and that's going to be one public hearing. So, I'll open this public hearing up at 8:38 PM, and this will be over system development charges. And, yes. Short stint, so. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. So, what's before you tonight are the annual inflationary increases for system development charges and public works connection fees. Each year, these fees and charges are evaluated for inflationary increase. And the inflationary index that we use is the E and R Publication Index, that tracks the construction cost. We use the Northwest Region Index, which is based out of Seattle, and that tracks Oregon, Washington, and most of Idaho. So, staff realized, well, so we tracked that cost from April 2017 to April 2018, and that inflationary increase was 2.725%, seven and a quarter percent. So, we realized, staff realized, that was a pretty large increase. So, we brought this before council in a work session on May 7th, asked for direction on which way council would like to go. Council proposed that we bring back the seven and a quarter percent increase to the fees and to the system development charges for discussion and evaluation tonight. So, that's what we've done. So, there are eight resolutions before you tonight, system development charges, three system development charges, and five public work connection fees.
Okay. Is there any questions? Over the resolutions. So, this would be from A through H resolutions. Any questions? Okay. All right. And with that, is there anyone that wanted to comment on these items? This would be 5A through H. Okay. Not seeing anyone. I will close the public hearing at 8:40 PM. Okay. Council, you've got some work to do here, so we're going to have a bunch of motions. So, first one is a resolution, that's on page 217, and this would be for revising the sewer system development charges.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Is that a second? Yeah, okay. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Next would be a resolution on page 227, and this is revising the transportation system development charges for impacts to the Albany transportation system, and to repeal, reaffirming the appeal fee.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. That's 5-1. Motion carried. Okay. Next would be on page 236. This is revising water system development charges, reaffirming an appeal fee.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next, page 238. This is revising connection charges for street connections to improve city streets of unassessed properties in the city.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay. Next is page 239. The resolution is on, and this is revising connection charges for storm connections of unassessed properties in the city of Albany.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. And the next is page 240. This is revising connection charges for sewer connections of unassessed properties in the city of Albany.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right. And the next one is resolution on page 242, and this is revising connection charges for water connections of unassessed properties in the city of Albany.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And last, with this public hearing section, is resolution number, it starts on page 244, revising post-construction stormwater quality program fees.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay. We got through that section, and then, next would be, starting on page 247. This one's going to be repealing public works fees. So, Rob, I will open the public hearing at, let's say, 8:45 PM.
So, it's not often that staff gets to come and recommend the elimination of fees and charges, but that's what this agenda item does. At the May 21st, City Council Public Works, City Council Work Session, we came and reviewed the fees, and there were two fees that we recommended to eliminate, they're no longer needed. One was the North Albany Street Improvement Assurance Fee, and the second was the Columbia, the Columbia Street Lift Station Connection Charge. The direction we received was to bring that, the documents necessary to eliminate those fees to the City Council. That's what we've done tonight. And additionally, staff has discovered an additional methodology that needs to be eliminated, and this is the North Albany Transportation SDC Methodology. It was adopted in 1994, should have been repealed in 97, when the first system-wide transportation SDC was adopted. It wasn't eliminated at that time, so we're bringing it forward now to eliminate that SDC methodology.
Any questions? All right. Is there anyone that would like to comment on item 6A through E? Is there anyone that would like to comment on item 6A through E? This is repealing the public works fees. Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing at 8:46 PM. And counsel?
Move to adopt 6A through E.
Okay. Do you have that, Allison?
Move to adopt 6A through E.
Instead of doing each one separately.
Right.
Okay. So you have...
You can do it.
Okay. So you've got resolution, starts on pages 247, 248, 249, 50, 51, and 53.
Is there a second, Allison?
Yes.
Okay. So I want to comment, when Jim Delaporte was the attorney, he mentioned that some of these resolutions, you should approve individually in case somebody challenges them, you know, they're not all lumped in together. I can't imagine anyone challenging the elimination of fees, so I said I think it's appropriate.
Anybody want to pay any money?
To take these out.
I don't see it.
Right. On these would be something I can see is not contested, but Bill is right, there is many things that you do need to have.
If it's something new, if it's an increase, yeah.
You need to have separate motions, so. But, okay, so there's a motion been made, and there's a second, and this is for 247 through 251. And any more comments? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. Okay. Now, we have the public hearing. This would be on item number seven, and, let's see. Yeah, let's do, we'll open up the public hearing on item number seven, setting fees and charges for development code provisions, repealing resolution number 6609. I'll open it up at 8:48 PM. And does, Bob, do you have comments on this one?
Yeah. Yeah. This is Bob Richardson, Planning Manager, and this is regarding planning fees. And it's been the City Council's practice to adjust the planning division fees based on the year-to-year increase in the April CPIW index. And this year, the increase was 2.59 percent, and so what's being proposed is to increase the planning division fees across the board at 2.59 percent. That's what we're proposing.
Okay. Any questions?
So the dollars will be rounded up, rounded down if it came to, you have an even?
I think they're rounded down if they're less than 50 cents on the dollar, and then up after that.
It's standard rounding, yeah. Up if it's above 50, if down if it's below 50.
Okay. All right. And is there anyone that would like to comment on setting the fees and charges for development code provisions? So, okay. And I will close the public hearing then at 8:50 PM. Counsel, there's a resolution on page 253 for this item.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. All right. That takes care of two out of our four pages this evening. All right. Next is another public hearing. So I will open it up at 8:50 PM, and this is for adjusting the utility rates for the 2018-2019 fiscal year, and these would be for setting the rates on wastewater and water and storm water. So, and is there staff comment on this one? Chris?
Yes, Mayor. Just a reminder that this is our new approach to have the council review and set rates for all three water utilities for the next fiscal year. So they will still go in effect at the traditional times, but you'll be approving your rates, if you choose to do so, tonight for all three.
Okay. All right. Bessie?
Yeah. Chris, I have a question. On page, okay, it says there's a 5% stormwater rate increase, and yet on page 272 and 275, it says 13%. I'm a little bit confused.
Yeah. So the 272 through 275 is a reprint of the presentation that was given where the staff recommended the 13% rate increase.
Okay.
So it's just an attachment from the previous work session when we discussed that. And the council directed us to do a 5% inflationary increase.
Yeah. I just saw both numbers in my mind.
Sure. It's a 5% is what you're voting on.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to comment on adjusting the utility rates for the 2018-2019 fiscal year? This is for wastewater, water, and storm water. Okay. All right. Not seeing anyone. I will close the public hearing at 8:51 PM. And counsel, you have a resolution on 277 for wastewater.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Then if you jump over to page 286, you will have setting the rates for water use.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. And then head over to page 290, and this one's for stormwater management services.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. And any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. Allison, we are keeping you busy tonight.
You surely are.
I'm sorry. I hope I'm not going too fast. Is it okay?
Move at the speed limit.
Thank goodness it's taped, huh?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. Okay, folks. Now, we are to business from the public. So, sorry, we had a lot of business to take care of this evening. Is there anyone that wanted to bring an item forward to us this evening? So, okay.
We've worn them out.
All right. From business from the public. So, okay. Not seeing anyone. Next is, this is adoption of a resolution. This one's on page 297. This is establishing a class special procurement, procurement and awarding a special procurement contract for flight submersible mixer projects. Who is going to talk about this one?
Nolan gets the pleasure.
Nolan? Yeah. It's like, I have no idea what this is.
We're about to find out.
You're about to find out.
So staff is looking for approval of a resolution to do a sole source procurement of flight submersible mixers. It is a part of the process at our WRF facility in the vertical loop reactor, lots of technical terms, but there are mixers that are, we could afford some efficiencies to be improved. These new mixers made by Flight have been tested in one of our cells already and have proven to be more efficient enough to where the Energy Trust is contributing money to this project. It's on the CIP list that you approved earlier this evening, and we are looking to, instead of doing an open bid process, to do a sole source from these that we know and we have in our system already. So this is to encourage continuity and familiarization with staff and use a proven product. They are the only supplier for this product as well, so we can't go out for, if we tried to do just this product, we would only be sending our bid to one company.
Now, questions?
They're the only supplier in Oregon, in the Northwest, nationally, worldwide?
I believe it is nationally. It's, I think they're sold, there's, they're a Xylem product, and I believe they sell their own product only. I don't believe they, they do not send them out.
Right?
Put to payoff.
Payoff?
Oh, what?
Scott, potentially. Scott LaRocque.
2.2 to 2.3 years. It is very good. Trust.
Okay.
He said 2.2 to 2.3 years. Since the system couldn't hear him.
2.2 to 2.3.
So how many submersible mixes do you get for 198,000?
So that's actually, I just found out right before this meeting, I mean, to say to the memo, that we're actually getting 12. There's two per basin, so you are getting 12 mixers.
For $198,000.
Hang on.
Yep.
Potentially. There's six mixers. So there's 12 existing, but we're going to be replacing it with one in each cell. So each cell has two mixers. We're going to be replacing it with one.
So one mixer will take the place of two existing.
Correct. The other mixers are 25 horsepower mixers. This is an eight horsepower mixer.
Well, you guys keep coming up with more and more ways to save money and save energy. I like it. I like hearing these stories.
That's nice.
Keep up the good work.
That's a gotta do.
Trying.
Gotta pay for proof somehow.
Okay. Questions? Counsel? Anymore? All right. There's a resolution on page 297.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right. Thank you. Next is designating the Albany Enterprise Zone. This came to us on Monday night, and so also is, there's no, no report with this in the packet, and this would be on page, resolutions on page 300. Or, John, did you have anything else, or you just hear?
I don't understand unless you have questions.
Okay. Any questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Sorry you had to wait all night, but yeah, so, thank you, John. Okay. Counsel, next is adoption of the consent calendar. There's just a few items on there, so if you don't have anything that needs to be pulled off this evening, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. Now, we are to page 308, and this would be award of a contract for professional services for consulting on the water reclamation facility solids handling improvements project. Stacy, this one's yours, huh?
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. Staff is recommending that council award a professional services agreement to Kennedy James to provide pre-designed services for the water reclamation facility solids handling improvement project. There has been significant effort, upfront effort that's been completed during the past year to identify composting technology to provide a Class A bio solids at the water reclamation facility. This pre-designed effort will include work to look at the different composting manufacturers. We'll be looking at de-watering equipment, layout at a site that has yet to be identified. We will also be looking at O and M considerations and cost estimates. We expect the pre-designed effort to be completed by the end of the year, and then in January 2019, we would present the pre-designed report to council for review and approval. Are there any questions?
Questions? Okay. What would you like to do with this item?
Move toward the contract.
Second. Third.
Any discussion?
It's a nice day.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. All right. Thank you, Stacy. And then next is for the vertical loop reactors aeration line improvements. So Nolan, this is on page 310.
So on this one, we had a previous project where we are looking to increase the amount of the contract by greater than 10%. We had a project at the vertical loop reactors, you might remember that we brought to you, where the blower line was leaking because of failed gaskets. The contractor has completed the work, but there were extras that were not predicted ahead of time when we opened up the trench. There were damaged utilities as a result of the hot air escaping the pipe, as well as there were some inconsistencies in the asphalt that brought about some unknowns when we opened up the trench and looked at the pipe. So this is to pay for those items that were found during construction that totaled to greater than 10% of the contract price.
Okay. Questions?
Question. I remember in the back of my head something about a contractor doing or not doing something.
This was potentially wrongfully spec gaskets. It wasn't the contractor, it would be the consulting engineer that would have either approved a submittal or put the wrong spec forward.
And is something being done about that?
We're working on that, yes.
You got your whips and chains and...
We hope so.
Guns and, yeah, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Bill?
Oh, Mike has had it first.
Oh, Mike.
How did we, how, okay, I gotta try to word this. Why were the asphalt's wrong?
They were simply incomplete. The consultant, same consultant provided those asphalt's, and there was a lot of data missing. I don't know that that directly related to the cost, but there were unknowns, and that's why the price went up, is because we discovered unknowns.
Kind of like leaking water and stuff.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
So in general, who designed the project?
CHTumhill.
And who provided the inspection services?
CHTumhill, I believe, as well.
So is that a practice we're still continuing to do to this day, to have the designer inspect the work?
I can, I mean, mostly in my own projects, not, not completely, but yes, we do have some designer involvement in inspection.
I mean, it's a little like Fox, Garden, Hen House, in my opinion.
Yep.
Inspection is very rarely done by the people who do the work.
I'm just looking at these bulleted items, like on the last one, the VLR aeration line was installed incorrectly.
They wouldn't have been inspecting, they, they didn't do the work, the actual physical work, to clarify. They, a contractor would have been the one doing the physical work.
The second bulleted item where the pipe joints were assumed to be a push-on style and said they're string TR Flex, so, you know, I don't know what the specs called for, and if somebody did a...
That one was clarified between the types, and we did not, we looked through our records and did not have a submittal on it in our record, and there was just a little bit of extra labor involved with the type of pipe that...
I mean, I guess in my experience in a prior life, it's either, you know, specifications or workmanship, or, and the inspection is kind of the, your last line of defense to catch, you know, a spec problem. Well, maybe not necessarily, but certainly workmanship, so. I just, that was my assumption, and I wanted to point it out, because I don't think it's a very good practice, in my opinion, to have the designers inspect their own work. It's done, and it's done in other areas of the world and so forth, you know, take a design-build project, you know, where they include inspection as part of that, but I don't think it's a good practice.
And Nolan's correct in that when we do hire consultants to design projects, they usually do provide some special inspection, but generally, staff is on, you know, with current practice, staff is onsite every day, staff's keeping track of change orders, and, and, you know, have general oversight over the work. So, so it's not, it's not a direct, what did you say, Fox, guarding the hen house? I always get those sayings wrong. It's not that, that type of a situation.
Well, and I understand Chris's comment. This is being taken care of, but it just, I want to point out for future work, my opinion.
I concur.
Thank you. So is this
Make that three.
Is this pretty much a state-of-the-art, run-of-the-mill kind of installation that we're doing here?
The installation is pretty typical of slower lines, but, I mean, there isn't we improve the gaskets, but it's not an uncommon method.
I mean, when it was first built, was it kind of a run-of-the-mill construction project?
Yeah, it isn't necessarily anything special, no.
I guess I'm surprised that the wrong gaskets were put in, if it was just a run-of-the-mill project.
As were we, we were not, this is all surprise.
So if you had noticed the gaskets were the wrong gaskets, would you have blown a whistle, huh?
I would have, yes, if I had noticed it.
But were you there?
I, no, I've only been on staff for now, six years.
Oh, okay.
This is what we
And this was done prior to your being?
Yes.
We'll make a motion to approve the cost overruns. Again, with the understanding, Chris, that we're tracking those.
Right, yeah.
So are we free of CH2M at this point?
There's a motion on the floor.
I think there was a
There was a second. There was a second.
I didn't hear, sorry, go ahead.
They're not doing any work for us right now.
CH2M is no longer, or they're not in business anymore, right?
Well, they're now Jacobs Engineering, and, but no, we don't have them on any projects right now.
How about the company that absorbed them? Do we do business with them?
No, we have no contracts with Jacobs.
I'm saying, I'm saying CH2M, used to be a good company. Let her know what happened.
Probably still is in a lot of ways.
Yep. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Okay, next is award of bid for pipe bursting projects. And who gets this one? Stacy?
She copied her.
Well, the last one was kind of a pipe bursting project.
Yeah, it was.
Surely you're jealous.
On May, on May 15, we received three bids for the 2018 pipe bursting project. The bids range from approximately $1.4 million to approximately $1.8 million. The low bid is Emery &amp; Sons Construction Group of Salem, Oregon, and the engineer's estimate was As discussed in the memo, in order to bring the project closer to budget, to the project budget, we negotiated with Emery &amp; Sons Construction. We eliminated six of the pipe segments in order to reduce the contract price. And staff is recommending that council award the reduced contract for this project to Emery &amp; Sons Construction Group in the amount of $1,130,394.
Question. Was anybody else given an opportunity to bid on the lower volume project?
The reduction was, was in the pipe segments, and so it reduced the eight-inch and the 10-inch pipe bursting items, and so we were able to reflect that reduction across the board on the three other contractors that submitted bids, and Emery &amp; Sons Construction Group was still the low bidder.
Well, it wasn't that they, they lowered their price, it's that we said, will you do less and get less money?
Yes, yeah, we eliminated work.
Right.
Correct, yep.
Okay, questions, Mike?
What's the downside in not doing these other segments?
Well, they go back in the queue, so we're going to be meeting, if not this month, in July, to talk about the 2019 collection system project. There's pipe segments identified in that project, and we will put these back on the table. The collection group prioritizes the segments just based on the condition, and so we'll plug those in, looking at, you know, we we go ahead and we fix worst-case first.
Okay, what would you like to do with this item?
Make a motion, we accept the lower responsive bidder for the project.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you, Stacy. Are you the next one, too?
I am.
Okay.
So for the Peachtree Lane area water line, we received 10 bids in response to this project. Bids were opened on May 22. The low bid was $977,561.71, and the high bid was one point, approximately $1.2 million. North Core USA, out of Salem, Oregon, was the low bidder, and staff is recommending that council award a contract in the amount of $977,561.71 to North Core USA.
You know, it's too bad seeing all of this area that's in that Spring Hill basin replacing water lines. It's just too bad. We don't have the funding and are working out a local improvement district to get all the sewer lines into, so. Because we will be faced with that someday in that whole Spring Hill area, you know, getting it connected to the sewer system.
Yeah, Bill?
Did we talk last month about North Core? Is that somebody you're familiar with?
We are, North Core, the owner used to work for North Saniam Paving.
And are they doing another project in town? Or am I thinking of somebody else?
They are. I'm trying to think.
I'm just curious how they're performing.
Good, good. Staff's worked with them on a number of projects. Maybe Oak, are they working on Oak Street? I should remember this, but I can't, but they've, they've done a number of projects. Staff's worked with, with that contractor on a lot.
Didn't you say last time they came from one of the other companies that we've done, they started a new business?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, and so you've worked with them for
I think I said North Saniam Paving, but it's specific excavation.
Okay, it's where they came. Counsel, what would you, more questions?
Make a motion, we award the contract as a lower responsive bidder.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you, Stacy, and now here comes John. So we're up to page 332 now.
John, John, he could have stayed home for two hours.
Why didn't you do that?
Miss all the excitement?
Yeah, no doubt. So we came to the May night council meeting, we got your authorization to apply for this FIA grant. And so this is just the second part of it, we're coming back to get your authorization to accept the grant. The grant is in the amount of $648,000, which covers 90% of the cost, construction cost for the apron rehab phase two. And just an FYI, phase one and phase two will be going together separately, let's just put it that way. A different contractor. Also, part of that, part of the resolution is authorizing the transfer of the city match from one budget over the other. The city match on this is $72,000. And the third part of this, staff recommends council award a contract to Wildish Construction, they're out of Eugene, in the amount of just shy of $570,000. There were two bids, two bidders, Wildish and Kodiak. Kodiak won the phase one project and did not win phase two, which was very disappointing. And if you have any other questions, I can...
This is a kind of a strange deal, where you bid the job before you have the money, then you have to ask FAA for the money.
Right, they want to know specifics before they even
Right, and hopefully they give you all the money, so it's a little different, but, yeah.
Can you share why it is such a disappointment?
Well, it would have been so much easier for our
Okay, just, just for us, not
For us and our consultant engineer. Now he's got to double up on pre-cons, and you got to try to get those two separate companies to meld, and it's just just adds another.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not because one of them's bad, or the other one is wonderful.
No, they're both good.
It's just the way the two might work together.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, you have a resolution on page 334.
Move for the adoption of the resolution?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you, John. All right, next, page 335, this would be appointing Jim Jansen, or James Jansen, to the City Tree Commission. And and this is actually Dick Wilson's neighbor, so. Okay. What would you like to do with this item?
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, and our last item, this is a report for the library. I don't see Ed here, so who's handling this one?
I can just tell you that that's an empty position, that they're hoping to move up to a library assistant, and then they'll take that one FTE, take half of it, and distribute it amongst two other library assistants. So we'll end up with about a little less than a half of an FTE that will remain vacant. So it's better use the FTE that they have.
Okay. Counsel? Any questions?
Move to approve. Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, we are down to business from the council. Stacy, anything this evening?
Couple things. First of all, I have received many complaints about our back-end parking at the post office. They have no idea why it has to be that way. They says, I can't back up. And anyway, so it's, it's one of those things where I just say, I don't like it either, what can I say? And the other thing is, we're talking about all this money and the budget and everything. Do I recall that we had talked about creating position for a grant writer?
Yes, yeah, yes, we did talk about it, and we're still looking at that. Each department has their own peculiarities with respect to what the grant writer would have to know, so it's trying to work out the details of how would you get one person citywide that would cover grants at each department.
Okay, so in the budget, did we allow for it?
No, we did not.
Well, that's good. We thought ahead on that one, didn't we? All right, that's all, thanks.
So just a reminder that a week from today, I'm having a total knee replacement, similar to what I did three years ago, so. I'm guessing I'll miss like two work sessions and two city council meetings, you know, we'll see how things go. Last time I, if you recall, I came to one of the meetings, the city council meeting, with a cooler that was full of ice packs. And throughout the meeting, I kept changing ice packs, until I ran out of ice packs, and then the pain just got crazy, so I left. So I'll see what I can do, you know, if it's necessary, I can possibly call in.
I was going to wonder if you could be my
And then you can hear what I sound like while I'm drugged up. So I might have my wife saying, Bill can't talk coherently. Can he call in tomorrow? So I'll keep you posted, but
So do you think it'll be the next council meeting? Do you think you'd be here in two weeks?
No, I doubt it.
Okay, so it would end up being in May?
In July.
I mean, July, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I would think the earliest I would come back would be a work session or a council meeting in July.
Okay, and then our July, so actually that's not till like the, what is it, first one?
The first meeting's in July, the ninth and the 11th.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess like three weeks, and obviously I won't be a carer next week, so.
Yeah, okay, well, good luck, Bill. Okay, Dick?
Yeah, I want to say, I had a chance to work at the Monteith House, they had a couple of tours, and I had a chance to watch people do that back-end parking thing. And if all the spaces there are empty, you can swoop in along the curb and then swoop out and then back in a little bit, and it works fine. But if there's several cars in spaces there, people get up and they park on the other side of the street, or they go park in front of Ophir's or someplace else. Some brave souls, they have new cars that have TV rear ends. They don't have much trouble, but I don't, I don't see older pickups or older cars parking that much, so. I have to agree. Back-end parking, it may be fine for new TV cars, or maybe automatic self-driving cars.
Self-driving, there you go.
But my old Buick is too, too old to do it.
I, I watched a guy in a fairly large pickup just pull up and back right in, and I was kind of amazed.
He had a TV pickup?
Why, I have no idea. But I just watched and said, okay, here all this, there's no way this guy is going to pull it off, and then just boom, boom, boom.
And there were cars on both sides?
If you have a driven truck, it's easy.
It's, a lot of it's driver ability, and that's no different than parallel parking, quite honestly, so.
Parallel parking.
Use your mirrors.
I know, when we were in, we were in downtown Seattle a couple months ago, and they've got it all over, you know, with the back-end diagonal, but the only thing that I, you know, find to me negative towards it is the spaces are narrow, more narrow than our regular, you know, parking spaces, so. I don't like getting that tight, you know, with my car in there, but in other words, backing in is fine, and Lisa probably sees it all the time. Yeah, so Robert could probably say, tell all kinds of stories, but, yeah.
I, too, get a lot of comments, people don't like it.
Okay, anything else, Dick? Okay, Rich?
Well, same location. It seems that people don't understand that's a one-way street. And some of the folks that say, oh, they see it angled that way, and they, they pull in going the wrong way.
I saw that, too.
So maybe, maybe we need to make sure we have a big enough sign that says wrong way. Because, I don't know, Hasso Haring has, has gotten a picture three or four times of some poor dipsoid over there going the wrong direction down the street, parking the wrong way, so.
Counselor Kupczynski brought that up to us as well, and so I think we're moving some signs, trying to make it clear that it's, there's no entry there.
Hasso was almost hit by somebody coming the wrong way on walking through.
Yeah, so we're making some adjustments to the signs, both
What about arrows?
Well, and, yeah, that's the next thing, is we probably will paint arrows exiting, as you exit the post office on what's that, second, with the, you know, out or right or left.
Move the sign closer to
Yeah, maybe the signs closer to, to the street, and so we'll try, but, you know.
Maybe calling off
It's sort of like the railway overpass on First Avenue, some people you just can't fix.
I know.
There's a part that goes with
Well, the staff thought that was funny, and, you know, that's, it is a fact. There are people you just can't fix.
We'll do, we'll do, try to make it more clear.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Chris. Anything else? Okay, Ray? Mike?
I'm just going to reiterate, we didn't have a chance, I didn't have a chance during all of the increases and everything else, and then reiterate, this engineering news of record that we go by to raise our fees based out of Seattle is troublesome to me. I just, if one of you people that are a whole lot smarter than I am could sit down with me and explain that, I would be much appreciated.
I nominate Jeff Blaine.
Okay. I'll take him to lunch.
It'll be a long lunch, for sure.
Well, yeah, especially when he's talking to me, it's going to be a real
So, you know, get a special, get a
Will you send him a memo on that?
Send him a text message tonight.
That's all I've got.
Okay.
I didn't have anything. The only thing is, is I, you know, I see that we, you know, we're kind of divided when it came to the budget, so I think what counsel's going to probably really need to do is give some guidance to Peter for our next budget, and maybe usually we meet with the budget committee in November, so maybe that would be a time to really whatever your concerns are, or whatever you want to see different, that would be a time to start in on that, but it's hard to want to really change you know, a budget during our budget process if it's already been, staff's put many, many hours in, you know, crafting up that budget. So I think staff probably wants some more clear direction on what would you like to see, so, and so think about that before we usually convene the budget committee in, you know, November, when we find out what the property tax revenues would be, so, Peter?
Well, if it's all right with you, I'll start that process a little bit earlier than November and start seeking your input, because I want you to remember also, at the same time, we're going to a biennial budget, so. And we're getting a new financial system, so there are significant changes afoot, so it'll be quite a bit earlier than November, and I hope you'll bear with me. I wanted to make a comment about the agenda denial. I wanted to make a comment about the agenda tonight, it was a real long one, so thank you for your attention to everything that was on it and the quick way in which we moved through that. I wanted to also assure you that Marilyn and I try to keep an eye on the agenda and space out agenda items, so it doesn't pile up like this. There were a lot of things that did have to come up, however, tonight. And lastly, I wanted to tell you that with respect to transient lodging tax for the county, I did meet with Ralph Wyatt, and he reiterated that they would appreciate that help. Gina has looked into it a little bit, in terms of what it would cost us in terms of manpower, and I'd invite Gina to make a comment on that.
It actually wouldn't take much more time to process those payments for the county than it does for processing for the city. We currently have a form online that's available for the hotel property managers, owners, whatever, to fill out, and we'd just be able to modify that and have the city portion and the county portion on that same form. We would want to have an IGA with the county, and with direction from council, implement a fee for collecting that, and then a separate account line, and then we would just send the payment each month when we received, at the end of the month. So it would, it wouldn't take a lot for us to do that, and it, you know, having a fee would be, being able to charge an administrative fee would be helpful, too, so...
What kind of number are we talking about, or do you, you know?
You know, it could be anywhere from 1%, 3%.
Yeah. I think they would, they would be very happy with that.
I think the hotel, what do the hotelers keep for their administrative fees, a half percent, is it?
I think it's 5%.
Oh, Rebecca would might know.
The hoteliers keep like 5% of that for their administrative fee.
Oh, 5% of the overall tax.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I think they're going to end up in, well, they're still doing a whole bunch of stuff, but the county is.
Okay, is that...
Oh, by default.
Is that okay for staff to work through that?
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Anything else, Peter?
Nothing else.
You didn't have anything else, okay?
One, one last question. Sean or Peter, is there an update on the Luba appeal, speaking in the county?
Yes, we had oral arguments last Thursday morning, and the Luba Board said that they actually were scheduled to have to have the decision out by the 29th of this month, and asked for an extension of one week to July 6th, which, by grant, gave them an extra week, so that we'll have something by July 6th.
Sean wouldn't say it, but Jeff said that Sean did a real good job representing the city.
Good.
Thank you.
They're not asking for any more input from the parties, or just delaying making their decision?
Right, they, they'll, I think they have probably five or six that they'll get out on that day, different decisions, so.
Uh-huh, yeah.
With Ron in the room, I just wanted to thank him and Rob Romeo today. We had a situation where someone ran a stop sign because they couldn't see it because of construction. They drove between a lady and her leashed pets, so we almost had a major incident, and they came running out within minutes with another stop sign to make sure that we had a safe environment, so.
Yeah.
I just wanted to thank the team for responding so quickly when a situation was identified.
Yeah. What intersection was that?
It was at Ferry and Second, right there, where the Sevres construction is going, going on, so.
Wow, wow, yeah.
Anyway, they came right out as soon as we identified that a stop sign had gotten moved somehow.
Yeah, boy, thank goodness.
Just wanted to go on record and, and thank the team for making sure the public safety is happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, does staff have anything else?
Contact.
Okay, so we do have Kara next Wednesday, and then Monday, June 25th, a work session, 27th is regular session, and with that, we're adjourned. Thank you, folks.